Good afternoon to everyone. Welcome to the afternoon-evening meeting of the Sacramento City Council. Would the Clerk please call a roll to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenier, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Ashby will be absent this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Would everyone please rise so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance? I will begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam City Turner, we do not have a closed-session report tonight, correct? Okay, very good. We do have a special presentation recognizing the 2018 City Management Academy graduates. Yvonne, welcome to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Yvonne Reedlinger and proudly serving with the Neighborhood Services Division of the Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment Department here in the city of Sacramento. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce to you the 2018 graduating class of the City Management Academy. This evening, we have two participants who are selected by the class to represent them this evening. This has been a challenging class, but in 2018, the class participants have prevailed. And I would also like to acknowledge and thank my colleagues and my supervisor Christina Pallone and team members Heather Holkstra, Randy Singh, and Reggae Brown. And a very special thank you to our part-time Senior Recreation Aid Amber Bishop, who served and came every night with me and did whatever I asked her to do, plus more. So, as you've heard, she was a great help in the last 10 weeks. Neighborhood Services, as you know, is a small but incredible group of dedicated and hard-working people who believe in the service of the Sacramento community and its residents, and that's why we do the City Management Academy. With that, I'd like to introduce Kyras, who will be our first presenter, and after that, Kyras will call Christian up, who will then be our second presenter. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne, and to the entire team. Welcome. Thank you.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor Steinberg, City Councilmembers. I'm sad to see my own district member is not here tonight, so shout out to Angelique from District One, cities -- citizens of Sacramento, guests and family. My name is Kyras Chiaji, and it is my privilege and honor to represent City Management Academy's class of 2018. Thank you for giving us a moment to shine and to share. I'm a Bay Area transplant who spent a few early childhood years here in the '70s and came back to make a life for myself as an adult in 1999. Since then, I've had opportunities to work with well over a dozen nonprofit and social service agencies. My passion and the bulk of my advocacy is for health equity, inclusionary housing, and reproductive justice. My son, Pastor Judah Dwight, from CMA class of 2017, encouraged me to gain perspective from another side. So I applied, and even though my own kid forgot to support my application on both advocacy days, I was accepted. For the first time, I knew that my work in the community counted on its own. In the short 10 weeks, we came to understand just how busy our local government is, the burdens you carry daily, and how complex the inner workings of a city this size are. We also got very good at parking downtown, at navigating the city's website, and while we had fewer guest speakers than we had hoped, every presenter was able to come -- every presenter who was able to come made sure we knew exactly who to blame for any problems we faced. They even gave us that other department's phone number. It's a blessing to have city officials be so accessible. Your names and faces are very familiar to us, but I've learned that we have a plethora of behind-the-scenes community warriors doing great work at a grassroots level. Holding down full-time nine-to-five jobs, families, and businesses, Sacramento has incredible change-makers who are the eyes, ears, hearts, hands, and mouthpieces of every district. Leadership that continues after business hours, on weekends, and all the rest of the time. I sat in class with 40 of them every Wednesday. My hope for coming to CMA was to learn how to connect the dots between city resources and gaps we, as residents, pour ourselves into filling. We have now been armed with a lot of information. If I know them, class of 2018 has an entire list of innovative ideas for solving problems, networking, and communication flying into your inboxes and onto your meeting agendas as we speak. Your job just got bigger, but you also just got 80 new helping hands. The rest of the world may think in terms of statistics and dollar signs, but Sacramentoans see human beings and value equality of life for all. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Well said.[354.12][354.12](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Council, family and friends. My name is Christian Beltran, and I'm here today to talk about what the City Management Academy has meant to so many of us in this year's cohort. But first, I'd like to take just a few seconds and recognize those that made this academy possible through their continued dedication and commitment to ensuring this program continues every year. Yvonne, Heather, Randy, Reggae, Christina, without any of you in the Office of Neighborhood Services, this opportunity could not happen without their continued dedication, and I would just like to thank you personally.[395.18][395.18](APPLAUSE). I would also like to especially thank the numerous representatives from the various city departments that took the time out of their evenings to come and speak about the duties and responsibilities of their departments. This academy would not be able to happen without their willingness to present pertinent information and data about the departments, as well as their willingness to answer many difficult questions stemming from our discussions. As you can see behind me, individuals that were selected from this program come from almost every background, every neighborhood, and every profession that makes up the wide diversity of this great city. As many of you already know, the City Management Academy is an opportunity for residents and business owners of Sacramento to learn more about the city they are a part of and how to become effective leaders for their communities. Some of us came here looking for specific answers about our city. Some of us came here to simply establish a better understanding of the complexities and nuances of running the city this size of Sacramento. And some of us came here because of our concern for the future of our communities. Yet, no matter what brought us here, there is one thing I can confidently say about all of us here today. We were no longer just loud advocates for our communities, but we had become strategic and effective leaders, ready to help and forward the well-being of our communities, utilizing the tools and knowledge we have gained over the last 10 weeks. However, we are not only potential liaisons between you and your residents, but we are also passionate and creative thinkers that have the desire to contribute to the public policy process and utilizing it to address some of the most pressing issues for our communities. It truly was eye-opening to hear all of the policy ideas my colleagues had me -- had by utilizing their own personal and professional experience. If I had to pick one specific topic that I know we are all invested in solving, it would definitely have to be addressing the homelessness problem in Sacramento. With that said, I would just like to close by adding one last thing. I implore you to please utilize us to engage the communities within your districts. We are here to help. All of us here today want nothing but the best for our communities, and we are committed to staying engaged and helping in any way that we can. Again, thank you for your resounding support, and we look forward to working with you and helping Sacramento become a better place for all that live here and visit here. Thank you.[541.75][541.75](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Well said.[544.75][544.75](APPLAUSE). Can all of the graduates please stand so that we can recognize you? Wow, I want to give, first of all, a big hand and say congratulations and thank you to you.[558.41][558.41](APPLAUSE). Let's hear from some of our -- please have a seat. They hear from several of Councilmembers. I know I want to make a comment as well, but I'll start with Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this, and a congratulations to all the graduates here. I do want to thank all our city staff who took the extra time to help share and spread this knowledge. Many of us here on the council, we all have limited staff, and even our own time, we try to give as much to the community. And I think what is so amazing about the City Management Academy is the multiplier effect to be able to address and help solve some of our greatest challenges. I can -- I think I would say that the last speaker and also the first speaker said it best in the ability to be a liaison and the ability to also utilize them. And, you know, even -- and some of you already have been leaders on your own right. I know our Parks Commissioners here, a couple of them both from throughout the city, have been actively trying to educate folks about our parks and community services, and even some of the other folks like Heather advocating for the library and working with multiple council districts as well. But most importantly, I think it's the new ideas. The new ideas to help us solve the biggest challenges that are coming before us. And, you know, I don't think any of us up here pretend to know all the answers, and I think that what makes Sacramento great is that neighborhood build -- that neighborhood strength that gets involved in -- by the City Management Academy, it's only building upon that. So with that, a big congratulations to all the class and a good shout-out to District Six City Management Academy graduates. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.[668.64][668.64](APPLAUSE). Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say congratulations. In 2004, I did the Planning Academy. 2006, I did the Management Academy, probably for the same reasons. I wanted to get involved in my neighborhood. I wanted to get involved in shaping and helping the city grow and change in ways that reflected the things I cared about. And it was later that I ended up running for office, but I will tell you that this experience will change you in the way -- and I appreciated the two speakers, particularly the first one, because you're right. Once you see what happens and how it happens and the rigorous challenges and the trade-offs, you can't look at anything plainly anymore. You no longer have that innocence of like, oh yeah, we can just do this, and there's no consequence. And I think that is exactly the thing that we need in our public leaders, whether your neighborhood, elected, civic, or otherwise, and so I'm really proud of all of you. I hope, though, that too, we just announced that the Measure U Oversight Committee is open for applications. We have a Planning Commission. We have a Parks Commission. We have many different opportunities for you to serve the city. Being on a commission isn't always the best way, but it's sometimes the way that calls to you. I would say that we are desperate in need of great leadership in all parts of making our city even better, and so I'm looking forward to seeing your faces wherever they land, wherever you are called to be, and whatever you are called to do, to continue to give back as we move the city forward. So, congrats.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.[765.32][765.32](APPLAUSE). Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I also congratulate you all on your investment in the city. Running a city is not easy. Making policy decisions is not a simple thing, and as the Vice Mayor just said, no issues are black and white. And I agree with him that you've lost a bit of innocence in terms of now you know a lot more about how the city runs. I really appreciate it, because the more people who are knowledgeable about how the city actually works, the more information that we can get back from the community that's really helpful for us to guide our policies as we move forward. To all the graduates from District Three, please contact my office. I'd love to have a personal conversation with each of you about the experience and about your ideas about how to move the city forward. And again, congratulations.[817.87][817.87](APPLAUSE).
Let me, as Mayor of the city, add my congratulations and also thank Christina and the Neighborhood Services team. Everything you and your group are involved in really represents the essence of community engagement. I mean, it's whether it's Summer City Hall or the City Management Academy, this is the good and happy stuff here. So, really, happy that -- and it's meaningful, and it's easy to take for granted what it takes to take time out of busy lives to want to get engaged in your city and to commit the amount of time that you have all committed to doing this. And it demonstrates, by definition, leadership. And so the question is always, what's next, right? What's the follow-up? How are you going to take that which you've learned and gained and apply it in our community? I know some of you are already involved and on boards and commissions, but here's a question that I have, maybe just a rhetorical question for all of us to think about. There are leadership organizations, for example, like the American Leadership Forum, that have alumni chapters, right? And they organize the alumni to continue to stay engaged, to tutor and mentor, if you will, the new class coming in. Have we thought about ensuring that we organize those who have been graduates of the City Management Academy to further their engagement and involvement and make sure that people are still working here? That's one question. The second question is, are we tracking the graduates of the various academies to actually show the connection between this sort of leadership and getting engaged in, whether it's a board or some other major community activity, to show the cause and effect? Those are my two questions.
I'll answer the last one first.
Okay.
Tracking, we do a little bit of tracking, but it's not really well-done, and we need to improve upon that. Your first question, yes. All of these potential alumni are here because they were selected by previous CMA alumni.
Ah.
The staff doesn't do the selection process. It's all done by alumni. So, they are very involved and will probably become more involved as we go through time, because they do want to become more involved. So, yes, they are.
I can see, you know, asking the whole cohort of City Management Academy graduates to take on XYZ project. And, I mean, you could see that kind of potential, because it's a large number of people who have demonstrated leadership and have gone through the training. I just hope we continue to think about how it will evolve this very successful program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, to all of you, thank you again. The requirement of graduation is that you attend and stay through all city council meetings.[1005.93][1005.93](LAUGHTER). Forty-seven weeks a year.[1008.25][1008.25](LAUGHTER). Forty-eight, yes, sorry.[1012.23][1012.23](LAUGHTER). Not anymore. Not really.
Thank you, Mayor.
But we thank you all very much, and thank you, Yvonne, and your team. Appreciate it.[1019.61][1019.61](APPLAUSE). Okay. Oh, can we get a picture? Yeah, come on, everybody, all the graduates, come on up so we can get a picture, of course. It's a great idea. Thanks.[1034.64][1034.64](APPLAUSE).
One, two, three.
Three chairs.
One more. One, two, three.[1086.23][1086.23](LAUGHTER). Oh, yeah. Happy Thanksgiving. One, two, three.[1090.23][1090.23](LAUGHTER).
Let us, if we can file out relatively quietly, sure appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we now move to the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that members want to discuss or remove from consent?
Yeah, I asked the Clerk earlier to pull item 12 from the discussion.
Okay, so let's then, if we can, Councilmember Harris, take Consent Calendar items one through 11. Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Warren. No public testimony on the consent calendar?
We do have four speakers.
Four speakers. Let's hear from the speakers.
Our first speaker is Macworthy on item one, then Peter Alexander on item two, Robert Copeland on item 10, and then David Andre on item 10.
Mr. Worthy.
Hi, y'all.
Good. Happy Thanksgiving.
Anyway, my concern is, if you short on water, how can you have a flood? I would be to study. Why would you be studying flood when you're short on water? Could there be another process to that money spent? You studied a flood, how long before the next flood will be? Can you cut that money and put that money somewhere else instead of those people getting paid for turning paper? People, it's tricky. It's very, very tricky to see that money is being spent, and what do we get out of it? Nothing. We get out of it, we short on water, but nobody come in and said the basic is we really short on water. I said, no. Nobody show us no instrument measure of short on water. Why do we have fresh water? Tell the people. Because of the ocean. Have the ocean descended in the past hundred years. That's how you're going to be short. How many high rides has been drilled down and cut your veins loose, and they can't come to the -- leave the river? They got to find somewhere else to go. Wake up, people. We going round and round and round. You say, well, we get heated up so quick. Well, we ain't seen the sun evaporate too much from the ocean. Why? Because you can't measure that. Get away from abstract and hire some folks and put them on job with that money that you throwing away about the flood.
Next speaker is Peter Alexander on item two, and then Robert Copeland on item 10.
Good afternoon. Missed opportunities, I've done a few, but I'm here to provide more than just a clue. You know, this cannabis industry is not to be legislated by lawyers or anyone else. They're related to the tomato. And so I'm here to call -- I've called forth an action by the Almighty Faction for this system of usurists and bar association minions, maintain all the greed and corruptions by deception and opinions. This be the U.S. Constitution, to be made real by prophetic resolution. I am, Peter. I am addressing you all. The mother of all boycotts be now the call. People to review, StopTheCrime.net. Also, look up John Galt's speech, Atlas Three -- I'm sorry, Atlas Shrugged Three. We're not there yet. The forty-day strike begins on this full moon. It truly will be our high noon and a beautiful tune, for we are the children, the warriors, the teachers, the police officers of the true promised land of Israel, which is beneath our feet. And the time be at hand to shut down the ports, the courts, the sports, the corruptions, and for everybody to get off the fence, pay no mortgages, pay no rents, and shut down the corruption by a most beautiful interruption. We are the most powerful people in the world, so the promised land needs to have the red, white, and blue in it truly unfurled. We are the power. The time is at hand to open these doors to the promised land, and the authority is mine to say as I do, as the authority be ours, to make it come true. We will, I will shut down every slaughterhouse, so too this industry of oil. As the true-hearted unto Almighty, stand up, arise without compromise, being truly royal. And the industry of the cannabis, I invite you all down to the Oakland Port on this full moon, and I will shut down this entire West Coast.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Your time is complete.
Till these corruptions in DC and Wall Street are toast. I have said it. It is so. It is done. Have a beautiful evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland and David Andre.
Why is item 10 on the consent calendar and not on the discussion calendar? Where can't we see this grand jury report on illegal camping along the American River? Where is it? I mean, it should be public -- it should be available to the public if it's not already.
I'm sure that it is. Is it not?
Then where is it?
It's part of the item. It's troubling.
If the people don't have a computer or cellphone, they can't access it.
Well, we can get you a copy, sir.
But it's probably the same thing the county board supervisors reported, the one they had their hearing about a couple -- about a month or so ago. More crime going up because of littering and all the other case because of that Boise, Idaho case. I mean, the anti-camping ordinance in the entire Sacramento city should be, how should I put this, gone. Because you got people sleeping on the American River, bike trail, about are cold, wet, when it rains, with this bad air quality. They're probably having respiratory problems. Get on the ball.
Next speaker is David Andre.
What grand jury report?
All part of the -- it's all part of the public record here in the report, the grand jury.
Kind of outreach is done with that. A lot of us have come to these city hall meetings, and we're on different work groups and things, and yet, time and time again, Sacramento City Council eliminates any real discussion, how to go forward and actually save people's lives. It's becoming winter time, and we got a secondary problem of the air is being unfit to breathe, and we have these high-sounding grand jury reports that none of us people who actually live on the streets know anything about. Thank you.
I have no more speakers.
Okay, the Consent Calendar items one through 11 has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. That passes. Now let's move to item 12. Councilman Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There was not necessarily going to be a presentation, but I just wanted to voice a couple of concerns to staff. First, you know, as we move into the electric age of electric propulsion, of course, we want to promote new users, and I appreciate that staff created this pilot program to create charging opportunities for people who are adopting electric cars. It's a new kind of program to have charging infrastructure in the public right-of-way, and so naturally, you know, we have to consider design considerations, especially since we have one proposer who intends to use the platform as a way to advertise for sponsorship, to subsidize the electricity to charge cars. I appreciate all the work that you've done to it, and reading the staff report, it looks like you've covered your bases pretty well. One question I do have for staff is whether you are going to be able to capture any data on the number of uses of each charging station and perhaps, you know, the length of time that people charge at them. And additionally, I don't know if it's possible, but what type of user you have, whether they have a full electric car or a hybrid car, because I think all of these things would be indicators about the efficacy of charging infrastructure in the right-of-way. I personally felt, and I've expressed to staff several times, that as the range of electric cars grows, the need for more and more charging stations will be lessened. And I hope to gather from this pilot program enough information so that we can make a really informed decision moving forward, whether we want to encourage charging stations in the public right-of-way or not. So, do you have an answer to any of those questions?
Good evening, Councilmember Harris and Mayor members of the council. In the item, we, I believe, we do have a requirement in the design guidelines that speak to the performance metrics that would be submitted, and it's escaping me at the moment, but in the RFP that we will be issuing, this will be one of the requirements for any agreement that we enter into. We are able to collect data in terms of the duration of the charge, number of connections per day by location. It is a little harder to get information on who is using it and where they live, but we have had a lot of promising discussions with vendors, with ideas about ways to figure out, for instance, what type of vehicle may be charging, if it's an older EV versus a new EV.
Excellent. Well, that's great. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, using the platform for advertisement, the -- the orientation of the charging stations is critical. And I think, you know, I particularly am not excited about changing those images every eight seconds. So I would ask that, that staff keep track of that. And particularly, you know, I know that you have a mechanism to reach out to people before pedestals are installed, but after they are, to, to gather information about whether or not that kind of advertisement is disturbing to drivers, you know? Possibly, you could work with Public Works and possibly correlate any accident data. I'm worried about the distraction of changing electronic signs at the street level that drivers are exposed to. So if you can capture information about that, I'd be much appreciative.
Okay. Vice Mayor? On this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the item as proposed. I appreciate Councilmember Harris's concerns. We've been working on one of this, on this project for a very long time. I asked the staff to start looking at on-street charging, I think, before you even joined us at the DIAS, Mayor, in 2016, because of the need to continue to support electric vehicle rollout. And Jennifer, you've done such a phenomenal job with our EV strategy, really in what is a dynamic process. We created a pilot program in Public Works to allow Public Works to be nimble and to move quickly. Unfortunately, I think this one has gotten kind of micromanaged to death, which is why it's taken two years plus to get here. And I just want us to get moving. The cost of doing this on-street charging is really, it's very high. And so to get people to do it, private vendors, things like being able to do some advertising to offset the infrastructure costs is very important. We looked at putting an on-street charger over here by the city, by the Cal EPA building, by the city garage. I think it came back at $200,000 just to do one on-street charger. We've run into significant challenges with EV Go. And I think that this opportunity through these guidelines will free the market to bring us solutions so that the city doesn't have to front the costs to build those things, but the market allows it. And this pilot is a great step in the right direction. So I want to thank you, Jennifer, for, for all of the effort you've done. And frankly, I hope that the vendors step up and take advantage of this because it's, it's a good opportunity.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Very good. No public testimony on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passes. Nine and a half. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, council members. All right, item 13 has been pulled from the agenda, as I understand it, correct? Continued. Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Do we get a date to continue?
Do you have a date, date certain or? But not a date specific. Does it matter, Madam Clerk?
It does. If we don't do it a date certain, we have to renotice it. So if you give us a date, we would need...
Number 17.
I will not be here on the 17th, but you're welcome, you're welcome to do it on the 17th. Okay? Then the motion is to continue the item until December the 11th. Moved by Councilmember Warren, seconded by Vice Mayor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Very good. We have one public hearing then, that's item 14. Who is presenting?
And Mayor, I talked to staff a little bit. If we're okay, I'd like to waive the presentation on this and close, open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Okay. I hope you didn't spend a long time preparing for your presentation.
She knew.
I do have public comments.
We do have a, well, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Good job, Nicole.
Nicole, we do have a couple of public comments. Let's hear from the members of the public, please.
I have one speaker on this item, McWorthy.
People, we should have all North Sacramento on this. Who going to own this project? S.H.R.A.? With taxpayers' money? How many people going to be employed? Not your contract, that's temp word. You're talking about how many people going to be employed to this structure? Nobody. There's some things that I got a call on, S.H.R.A., on some things. There need to be some, some situations there because some things being said to some kids by letter from this administration that I got a call on. 18-year-old people, just turned 18-year-old, cannot have Section 8. So why does woman's daughter get a letter about her rent? These are the things you should be taking care of there. It's devastating to see what kind of calls I get when you got a child and saying you're going to have to pay because you live at Section 8. We know where it's come from, and we know when the petition was taken. Go back and look at the profession of this organization. You may find something.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
Okay. We do have one member, Councilman Carr.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. One question, Michelle, on the resident services. You know, at Providence Place, we have a 20-hour resident service provision, and it doesn't come in nearly enough. Is this our opportunity to increase the resident service hours at these locations?
They currently do have resident services at, these are three complexes, as you're probably aware from the staff report.
Could you speak into the microphone, Michelle?
These are three different property complexes where they actually do have resident services. And so this, this is going to help us continue to have resident services at all three of those locations.
But it's calling for 20 hours a week.
That is correct.
And we know at Providence Place, that is not nearly sufficient. And we've had to supplement the resident services there in order to try to get control of that apartment complex. So I'm saying it's 20 hours. Where's the 20 hours come from?
The 20 hours is the resident services provider that they contract with who provides those services for the, for the complex.
So can we contract for more hours at this point?
Well, it's, it's actually 24 hours. But to contract for more services, then that would have to go into the financials that we would have to take a look at. In other words, we'd have to redo the financing and underwriting of the property to, of the project to increase the resident services.
Well, this is Mr. Warren's district, but my experience has been that if you have someone there 20 hours a week, they're not providing good service. You need someone there all the time to provide both case management service during the day and then enrichment programs at night. And with 20 hours, you just can't do it.
I think it does vary. Our experience shows that it does vary from complex to complex. This is between the three, there's only 92 units between three separate complexes versus Providence Place, which I believe has many more units than what we're seeing in these complexes here. So we see variances, you know, based on how large the complex is, how many family units there are versus singles. So those are all the things that really go into whether you're going to have a really robust resident services program that's going to address the needs, or if you may need to supplement or augment that, which is what has had to happen at Providence Place. It is a very large family complex.
Okay, so you're taking into consideration the number of units. And in your estimation, the number of units don't justify a full-time person.
Oh, absolutely.
If there were a larger one like Providence Place with 300 units, then you would, if you had to do that contract again, you would put more than 20 hours in.
Correct. We would approach that quite differently. But this is 92 over three separate complexes, so much, much smaller ratio.
Okay. Councilman Warren?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and, and I heard my colleague say he was happy, and I'm very happy that he's happy. And because those were very good questions, and I just wanted to make sure that there was an analysis that we really used to determine the number of, of community service hours. As you'd mentioned, larger complexes take more hours. So is there a science that you use in determining the exact numbers of hours for these projects?
I wouldn't say that it's a science. I'd say that we do take that into consideration and then looking at, you know, how many are going to have children, a lot of young children. And then that really dictates the type of resident services that we're looking at. If they're seniors, it's going to be much different than when we have after-school programs geared towards larger complexes with children. But there isn't a specific cutoff in terms of, you know, 300 units, you get X. It doesn't necessarily work that way. And then we also have to look at the, you know, the financials. Can the project support the amount of resident services if we're trying to increase them?
If, but if it, if somehow if it determine, if, if it is determined that we need more support, is there anything that precludes? I know you said this is essentially an expense that has to be factored into the overall project performer. Is that correct?
Yes.
So is there some, you know, occurrence that takes place when we say, well, maybe we should supplement this more? Have you done that on occasion?
Yes, we have.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
If we were recapitalizing, let's say, a project like Providence Place based on our history and what we know, then we would definitely be looking at coming in with a much higher level of resident services if, if we're at that process where we're recapitalizing
I've been supporting Providence Place, the extra services there, out of my council funds for two years. Is there an opportunity to?
Yeah. The question would be at the point that Providence Place is ready for recapitalization, which usually happens about every 15 years or so. So we would need to go back and take a look at the last time. I don't recall off the top of my head when they went through their last refinancing similar to what you're seeing here.
I have to support them for another 15 years?
No, it's not 15 years.
Okay, are there good discussion? Are there any further questions? If not, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. Thank you very much. Good, good job. Okay, that ends actually the formal part of the agenda. We have council ideas and questions. And Madam Clerk is up as well. Members? Let's start with the city clerk. Do you want to do that? It's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have board and commission appointments to read into the record. To the Capital Area Development Authority Governing Board is Randall Winston. To the Compensation Commission is Arthur Scotland. To the Ethel McCloy Heart Trust Advisory Committee is David Pacheco and Lynn Stevenson. To the Parks and Recreation Commission is Terry Kletzman. To the Preservation Commission is William Carter. To the Sacramento Heritage, Inc. Board of Directors is Cody Storm, Kate Worthington, Megan Rebka, William Berg. And lastly, to the Utilities Rate Advisory Commission, April Butcher-Hovest and Brian
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let me turn it over to Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. This is our last meeting before the holiday. I wanted to make an announcement about the annual Run to Feed the Hungry, which benefits the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services. Of course, it happens in District 3. It starts at 8:15 a.m. on Thanksgiving morning for the 10K and 9 a.m. for the 5K. This is the 25th anniversary, which is quite something. Last year, it was the biggest footrace in the country on that particular day. We anticipate it will continue to be that. It starts at the entrance to Sac State on J Street. It finishes right by Fremont Presbyterian Church. It's a really fun event, family-friendly. We hope you come out. It may be raining, but that's a good thing because it'll knock the smoke out of the air. If you live within the route of Run to Feed the Hungry, please put your waste containers out before 4 a.m. As solid waste will be completing their routes before the event gets kicked off. And you can find the route on our website at thecityofSacramento.org, Mayor, Council, Districts, District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to it. It's a great event. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. I have two items. Do you want the adjournment memory now?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we do that? That would be appropriate. Thank you.
So the first item is I want to first thank the city manager and you for stepping up last week when the wildfire smoke really became a public health emergency in the city of Sacramento to respond for our city employees. But one of the things that was very clear is we have a protocol, a clear protocol with OES for summer events when we need warming, cooling centers. We have a protocol for winter events when we need warming centers. We don't have a clear protocol for public health when we have events like this. And given the nature of climate change, I think that we'll have to begin to prepare, not only as a city organization, but as the city government, to better coordinate these situations, not only with our partners, but the community. There was a lot of confusion. Schools closed, but employers didn't know if it was a declared emergency. And so employees were going to work in environments that were unhealthy. So what I'd like to do, Mr. City Manager, is work with you and the mayor, if he's interested. I've spoken, I mentioned this at Secog last week to ask Secog to take a role. I've spoken to Alberto Ayala, the APCO. I think we need a community plan that if we have such dangerous air quality conditions, we had the worst air quality in the world last week, worse than Beijing, worse than many, well, we were the worst. We need a plan to just respond to that, to help the public understand what their role is, and then to provide clear guidance to schools and employers. And so I just think this caught us a little bit off guard because it never happened before, and I'd like us to be better prepared going forward.
May I just say, this is really a timely and important suggestion, and I want to, I want to back it up. And always the first order, right, is to, is to collaborate with our, with our partners, which we will always seek to do. But we also need to know where we have the ability to make our own decisions as, as necessary. And I know we had an issue around the masks themselves, and I think the city, by the way, and the manager acted completely appropriately.
Absolutely.
And, and I appreciate your willingness, sort of in this new and unprecedented situation, to step up in the way that you did. But I do think it begs the question of going forward, how do we have a clear set of protocols? Obviously, working it, working as much out as we can with our partners, but where we can't work it out with our partners, how we make it very clear what we intend to do to protect the health and safety of, of our residents.
And Mayor, I think just to put a fine point on that, there's actually unclear authority when there's that type of disaster, an air quality disaster of, we know that certain entities can declare a crisis, but one of the entities that can't, we know, is the air district. The APCO doesn't have any authority in that situation. So one of the things I'm going to suggest that we do with the Sacramento Air Quality Management District is potentially look at legislation to allow APCOs to have a limited authority for an air quality emergency. But I, I think you're absolutely right. The city staff, Howard, I think the community needed some guidance. The city offered masks. Other jurisdictions were doing the same thing. And let's next time hopefully have a better coordinated response with our partners. And I think the city can continue to be a leader like we were this last time.
Good.
And I'll do my adjournment memory. Many of you have followed the trajectory of the Marina Vista Alder Grove community off of Broadway, one of our largest public housing sites in the region. One woman there distinguished herself as the matriarch and sort of the leader of that community. Her name was Leah Tata Floyd. We actually renamed the elementary school in her honor in 2013. And she also produced, it's too bad that Councilmember Jennings isn't here, because her son, Malcolm Floyd, was one of the leading players for the San Diego Chargers. And so out of that community, she taught dance, Polynesian dance, to the students at Leah Tata Floyd. She worked to bring the community together around keeping kids in school, providing support to parents. And even though she later in life, because of her son, prospered, she maintained her roots and dedication to, to that community, to those kids. And she passed away last week, and I just want to memorialize her here tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, a great contribution to the people of Sacramento. Thank you. Councilman Geta?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I too will echo the comments about our air quality and the need to have a better coordination. And I had the, the pleasure of, of doing a little social media with Dr. Ayala from our APCO to try to get some information out. And, you know, at least in, in my capacity as, as vice chair for the air quality district and a number of us as board members on it, I think that'll be an important thing for us to push. And even part of our, in the Law and Legislation Committee, part of our platform to look at some kind of state legislation that gives us some authority, or at least gives us some direction. So I'll echo that, that component there. Also, for the city manager here, I've discussed this with Councilmember Chenere, the chairman of our Law and Legislation Committee. Chenere, the, uh, Chairman of our Law and Legislation Committee, uh, it's been brought to my attention that the C2 Zone has a limitation of sixty-four hundred square feet, um, per, for an application in that area. In order to address a pla- a project in my district, I'd like to direct the, uh, Planning Department to eliminate the C, Section C of the city code, um, that is coming part of the planning bundle at the next Law and Legislation Committee. So if we can get that prepped beforehand, it's gonna be up on, uh, the twenty-seventh. Um, but there's a, you know, there's a, there's an issue there to try to make a project fit in that, in that area, uh, but, and if that could be brought to the Law and Legislation Committee, it's on the agenda, yeah, on the twenty-seventh.
Good.
Uh, and then just three quick events. Save the date, Thursday, December eighth, at five thirty PM, at the Coloma Center. We're gonna have snow, much fun, and the District Six tree lighting. Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers, if you guys wanna join us for a little bit of fun there. Uh, District Six and our, uh, Department of Public Works is gonna have its second annual, twenty-second, Daniel, holiday celebration, uh, is helping out the kids over at Mark Twain Elementary. We're gonna have face painting, magic, games, crafts, uh, of course, uh, pictures with Santa and food, and it's our city employees going out and connecting with the community, and this year they've selected Mark Twain Elementary. Um, and also, uh, November twenty-first, uh, we're gonna have the Fruit Ridge Manor Neighborhood Association. With that, I hope everybody has a great holiday and spends the next few days with their family and friends, enjoying good fellowship.
Thank you, thank you so much, Eric. Jay, Councilman Chenere?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, wanna remember two Sacramentoans, actually. The first, I just wanna thank Wellspring Women's Center, they had a really nice commemoration for Sister Claire Graham, who died, uh, probably about two months ago now. And Sister Claire was wonderful, I worked with her for a year while I was at the food bank, and was one of the, the two folks with Sister Catherine, who started Wellspring, and really was an important woman here in Sacramento, a great leader. Uh, the other person, uh, I wanna adjourn in memory of Raimundo Augustine Luhan, or Cactus Ray, as we all knew him, uh, or the mayor of Oak Park, as we, we all know. He passed away, he's been fighting cancer for quite a while. Ray was a wonderful man, who always had a smile on his face, he was generally at Old Soul or Broadway Coffee, and would buy you a cup of coffee regardless of what you said, and, um, was just, he, he was just a fixture in the neighborhood, and, uh, really a wonderful, wonderful human being, and we, we just wanna give our condolences to his daughter and all. He's been living up in Quincy for a while, going through treatment, um, and actually fought this incredibly bravely, never heard him complain, he'd come down and visit quite a bit, and, uh, we just wanna s- give our condolences to his family.
Of course, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to say, uh, when I moved to Oak Park in two thousand, uh, five, Ray was one of the first people I met, and Joni, and, uh, you know, he just was the light of the room, and so, uh, when you talk about people like Leah Tata Floyd, who bring the community together and leave them better, he is exactly that, that person in Oak Park, and just a, a wonderful, wonderful man.
Really cared, yep, positive force, thank you.
The real mayor.
The real mayor, yes, exactly. Okay, we do have eight members of the public who wanna speak before we adjourn the meeting tonight.
Thank you, our first is Gregory Valvenovich, then Macworthy, then Noah Diggs.
Mr. Valvenovich is not here.
Valvenovich, Macworthy.
Mr. Worthy?
And then following Mr. Worthy is Noah Diggs, and I believe it's Darius Cooper, and then Robert Copeland.
Your city academy, this is the second time I had opportunity to, to hear. They can only lead in Parks and Recreation, it's your problem, just clean that up. Okay, now you had three, uh, district didn't have no drug dispensers, how did that happen? People, we know thuggism when we see it, because we grew up with it. And to what we want to say to the, uh, young man's, uh, got killed over in the South Avenue, that was a disgrace, somebody got to defend it. I assure you, education people, why would the city go over there and republish that property, and the federal government and the DA hadn't finished investigation? Wake up, people. There's some question, because people called me and asked me something that I had raised here, and I had raised it here several times, but we, we wanna also, because I look for the chief to be here. Now, the chief, uh, when you had, uh, when you look at, uh, church and synagogue politics, I tell the chief and the city manager, you're not old enough to know what you're talking about, stay out of that, you'll get killed, stay out of that, and especially the chief. And I wanna get on to him personally, you don't know what you're talking about, stay away from that, because it'll blow your way. Now, in Thousand Oaks, who radicalized the Marine Corps? I'm working with a man now, one right here in North Highlands. Been to the sheriff's department, nothing to be done. People, you don't know what leadership is, you only elected here to represent. Go back to your constituents that got common sense and talk, but you fear that they will say some of the things that I have told you, and I'm gonna continue telling you. I'm gonna watch your academy and follow some names, because I got somehow gonna come back with you later. I ain't gonna telegraph it now, but I'm gonna show you something.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy, our next speaker is Noah Diggs, then Darius Cooper, and Robert Copeland.
Documents of American History edited by Henry Steele, the second pair, the second sentence, a speaker of the Moors, who are now the people that call Black African-American, Ferdinand and Isabella, for as much of you, of you Christopher Columbus are going by our command, with some of our vessels and men to discover and subdue some islands and continent in the ocean, and it is hoped by God's assistance, some of the said islands and continents in the ocean will be discovered and conquered by your means and conduct. So off top, we dealing with colonial occupation. Why is it, I came here last time and I spoke, I had FBI just a couple of days ago come to my people house looking for me, mind you, the only thing I was doing was observing the court procedures at the Sacramento Superior Court, when the officer decided to ask me for my name and, uh, for my ID, took me to jail for contempt of court. I came in here and spoke, I came back and was gonna speak again, but seeing some Sacramento police officers at the light rail, who just chose to flash the light on me from their car from across the street while I'm waiting for the train, just flashing his light on me for no reason. You feel me? Uh, they're, they're telling me, I see, I see another officer for Sacramento Police Department telling me, oh, yeah, we're gonna get you, I'm like, give me for what? Oh, committing a crime, when all I'm doing, all, I'll have, I don't have a background, all I do is record, I got a phone, I record the police, I'm getting arrested, uh, been arrested four times, the FBI has came to three of my people house in a month and a half, trying to ask him, am I criminal, do I talk about hurting the police, this and that, I got trespassed from six different places, two courthouses, uh, a hospital, three different stores, all for me not committing no crime, and we dealing with colonial occupation. These Europeans that are not Americans, they're Europeans, and I, and this don't make no sense, what is going on?
Mr. Diggs, our next speaker is Darius Cooper, then Robert Copeland, then David Andre.
And that's my homie right there.
Darius Cooper?
I'm, I'm rapper, I'm rapper.
No, no, you can't, you can't speak twice, sir. Nope, if you can't speak, then that's okay, then you can, you can speak next time, thank you, sir.
Robert Copeland, then David Andre, then Jen Rogar.
As you know, I normally don't agree with the city council on hardly anything, but I agree with, uh, Steve Hansen, when he have air quality, a commissioner, whatever he wants to do, thank you, we need that in Sacramento. Uh, now, uh, for the bad stuff. Uh, what, what are you gonna solve, uh, several problems in Sacramento? The homeless crisis, the housing crisis, the rental crisis, lack of jobs in Sacramento? You're doing halfway measures, you're not doing the whole entire thing. We need bold leadership in this town, that are willing to solve problems, and I don't see that from the city council. When you have a shelter declaration for three months? What are you doing? It should be longer, kids, you're not gonna solve the homeless crisis in three months, between December first and March first, or whenever that is. It takes longer than that, I think you just did it for the money, and I told, uh, one of your other city council members that last week, uh, when I was here for about forty minutes, uh, uh, Mr. Jennings, I told him that, he said, trust me, we're gonna do, solve it. Uh, next, uh, the third and fourth of December, I'm gonna be at, uh, State Capitol, County Board of Supervisors, a Sacramento Tenants Union meeting, and right here within two days, 'cause I am serious about getting stuff done. I am tired of us, government, uh, doing halfway measures, and I think that's what you're doing. We should have had housing, we should have had housing, uh, problems, uh, back when Mayor Steinbrenner first became mayor, not a few weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland, next speaker is David Andre, then Jen Rogar, then Tom.
Again, City Council, um, I'd like to, I could talk about the toilet issue again, I guess everybody can see that. This is a meme that's going around all over Sacramento in different places, and it's talking about, um, the previous meeting that I was at here, where you guys said you were gonna buy one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine chairs for a total of four hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Yeah, we don't have money for porta-potties, so that we don't have fecal material infecting us on the streets. It's gonna rain pretty soon, the fecal material's gonna wash in the river, bacteria grows more when it's wet, we should think about that before we do this, um, the purchase of these chairs. We need, we really need to address that, I know it's kinda funny to some people, but this is real human suffering, and a potential actually to have some kinda like big-time disease outbreak, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jen Rogar, then Tom, and our final speaker is Tim Gagin.
Okay, uh, I don't think this'll really make a difference, but I keep trying every week, anyway. I do wanna say Sister Claire was a, a good person to my mother, who sang in the St. Francis Choir, she really did care about the homeless. Sorry, rest in peace, Sister Claire. This time is of the essence is a legal term, that if you're a lawyer, you know. It's thirty degrees outside, and I'm asking you not to close the triage center, ever. I wrote a little ditty, I took this from Lead Belly, I didn't write it, but I changed the lyrics a little bit. And we do have an old man out here, a homeless woman was here earlier, trying to get in, and he needs a home. My husband was there, but then his mind broke down. Now he lives beneath the bridge, he waits for a home to be in. Old man, old man, don't lie to me, to me, where did you sleep last night? On the street, on the street where the homeless get beat, I shiver the whole night. Yeah, speed up, 'cause my time's going out. Please keep the triage center open eternally. Tell the people in the neighborhood to let the love shine out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogar.
Hope you listen to this.
Next speaker is Tom, and then Tim Gagin. Tom here? It's your time to speak. You need to come up to the podium, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, for the air quality, um, I think what we should do, a good solution, it would be a fantasy idea brought to life, um, get all the air purifiers, like, you know, those air purifiers you get for your houses, it's all about, and start putting every single one that you could find on the streets, and there's a solution right there, I think.
Thank you, Tom.
Do you guys think you would actually, do you think we could do something like that?
Air freshener?
Do you think we could add like?
Air purifiers, I don't, I don't know if that'll solve the problem here, but I appreciate the, appreciate the thought, I really do. Need rain is what we need.
That's all the engineering, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, our next speaker is Tim Gagin, Gagin.
Making a, uh, social services request, more or less pro forma, I, I don't know that such a list exists, but if there were a list of, insofar as I'm presently homeless, if there were a list of shelters during, um, weather crises, of one, or air crises, whatever, you know, whatever it's called, you have something called chill factor, I mean, when, if it gets below freezing and there's a twenty or thirty mile an hour wind, you also have something called hypothermia, and, uh, I think one, there was one council meeting here once in the last five years, where this was an inmate as an issue, and just while that meeting was going on, two people were freezing to death outside at Shallows Park right across from the old city hall. This was like, it's chill factor, I've known that, I used to live in Montana, they rate them like from one to five, and, or five, the most severe, you can, everything should be covered technically, wear goggles or something, but I don't know how otherwise, but it's that pro forma request, though, that's what I'm trying to obtain, and I'd like to be directed, navigated, I don't know however, but in any event, to find out, to avail myself of these things. Otherwise, I, I can say that if for ten, ten occasions, such thing, such a thing would occur, you know, some sort of cr- socio-ecological crisis of some kind, um, you know, you know where to go to get out of it, you know, that, I was, you know, that was twenty-four-seven for me, that whole, that whole experience.
Mr. Gagin, thank you, we're working on it, and, um, we have the, the triage center open at least through the end of December, um, and we intend to open more such shelters, so stay tuned. Sure, let's see if we can, Deputy Chief Lester is, is back there, um, would you mind meeting with the deputy chief, let's see if we can find you, uh, some, some shelter here, we'll do our very best, okay? Thank you, of course. Okay, we wish everybody a happy and peaceful Thanksgiving, and, um, especially for those who are hurting and less fortunate, um, better days ahead for everybody. For adjourn, thank you.